One and good evening and welcome, everybody. I call this February nine, two thousand and twenty one, virtual administrative meeting of the Bernaleo County Commissioners to Order. And now we will have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would like Shirley Reagan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. On behalf of the Finance Team, I know that you have been doing a lot of great work behind the scenes. So Shirley, when you're ready.
Thank you, Commissioner. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Shirley. And now, Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, there's only one change, and that's just moving item three A, the homeless assistance discussion, to discussion. So, and that's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Onto proclamations. League of United Latin American Citizens Proclamation, presented by Vice Chair Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, the National LULAC is huge for, you know, our communities. They do many great things, especially here in Albuquerque. They advocate in many different ways, whether it comes to Latin-owned businesses, education, many different aspects. So it's really my distinct honor to read this particular recognition today. So with that being said, the Bernaleo County Board of Commissioners, which is sponsored by all the Commissioners in Bernaleo County. Whereas ninety-two years ago, the founders of the League of United Latin American Citizens, better known as LULAC, joined together to establish an organization that would become the largest, oldest, and most successful Hispanic civil rights and service organization in the United States. And whereas since its inception on February seventeenth, nineteen twenty-nine in Corpus Christi, Texas, LULAC has championed the cause of Hispanic Americans in education, employment, economic development, and civil rights. And whereas LULAC has developed a comprehensive set of nationwide programs fostering educational attainment, job training, housing, scholarship, citizenship, and voter registration. And whereas LULAC members throughout the nation have developed a tremendous track record of success, advancing the economic conditions, educational attainment, and political influence, health, and civil rights of the population of the United States. And whereas LULAC has adopted a legislative platform that provides humanitarian relief for citizens and immigrants, increased educational opportunities for our youth, and equal treatment for all in the United States and its territories, including the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico. And whereas this year, the League of United Latin American Citizens will celebrate ninety-two years of community service to increase educational opportunities and improve the quality of life for Americans. Now therefore be it resolved that Bernaleo County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims the week of February fourteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, to be designated as National LULAC Week. And ask the residents of Bernaleo County to join the LULAC membership in observing the organization's ninety years of service and the outstanding contributions LULAC has made to our country, done this ninth day of February, two thousand and twenty-one, in Bernaleo County, the state of New Mexico, signed by all county commissioners. Madam Chair, I would like to invite Mr. Martinez to say a few words on behalf of LULAC.
Excellent. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
You're on mute, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Casada, distinguished Commissioner, and all of the Bernaleo County Commission. It's a great honor that you are recognizing our organization and ninety-two years as an organization. I'm Pablo Martinez. I'm the National Treasurer of LULAC. I'm here in Las Cruces, and you have very active chapters in Albuquerque, eighty fifty-seven, and then four other councils. And, you know, one of the founding members of LULAC was our late Senator Dennis Chavez, as well as some of the Osuna, Ben Osuna, who they named the Osuna Boulevard, was one of the past national presidents. We had some great leaders that came out of Albuquerque and out of New Mexico. And this organization, we have envisioned in keeping our children here in our state. New Mexico has always been the flagship of all of the Hispanic communities, especially the city of Albuquerque. We look forward in hosting our national convention in two thousand and twenty-three. We rescheduled that national convention because of the pandemic. But we are also very proud of the members of the Board of Commission and the city manager, I mean, the county manager, and all of you that have represented New Mexicans very well. And we're great, and we're proud that New Mexico is in the forefront of this great organization. And thank you again for this great.
Again, we do acknowledge, the Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge Virginia Chavez. Bernaleo County Extension Service, again, it's basically saying the same thing. Virginia Chavez is an administrative program assistant, provided a program assistant of the Extension Office. She also retired in two thousand and twenty after serving with the office for twenty-one years. She assisted the public to find answers to the wealth of expertise available, finding pride in providing educational resources to the community. Of course, she was also directly involved in the 4H programs. And she was involved in 4H for thirty-two years in all, raising all her three sons in 4H. We therefore would like to congratulate Ms. Chavez for her honor retirement and thank her for many years of service to Bernaleo County. It's my honor to also just to acknowledge some very dedicated employees that really made a difference in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. And do we have the recipients here? Well, I'm understanding that Ms. Davis could not make it, but I think Ms. Chavez is here. Virginia, I don't know if you'd like to say a few words?
Sure. I'd like to say a few words. I think extension is so important for the community. I wish more people knew about the Extension Office. Seems like we're a little hidden place, but we do serve a lot of people that do know what extension is all about, and of course, the 4H. And it was a pleasure working for the extension and helping all those people that called and asked for help. And I'm gonna miss it, but I enjoyed it every bit of the way.
And Virginia, I think a lot of people don't know about the programs to help the nutrition and all the mothers that you have worked with, particularly single mothers to work with that worked in terms of nutrition and learning how to essentially make food. Do you want to talk a little bit about that program?
Well, that, I think that Cindy is probably the one that worked with them more, but just the fact that I saw all the people that came in and were very grateful at helping, at getting information and helping them work on making food on a budget and things like that. I think they were very grateful, and they learned a lot from the Extension Office. I think we're a great asset for the community, and I'm sure they're going to continue to do that.
Well, again, thank you very much, Chavez, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Well, thank you. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chavez. And yes, the Extension Office is awesome. Next up, County Manager, Bernaleo County Presented with CARES Act Special Award. Presentation of that award. Take it away, County Manager.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So I am gonna hand this over to Leandro Cordova of New Mexico Counties, and he would like to make a special presentation.
Go ahead, Leandro. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, County Manager. I'm coming to you from beautiful Trujillo, New Mexico, up in Rarito County, and I may not have the best internet, Madam Chair. So if I need to turn off my camera so that you can hear me better, let me know, and I will do that. I would also like to request being able to take these two items together as I kind of prepared my remarks, opposite of how they're presented in the agenda. So I may do that. I appreciate it. My name is Leandro Cordova. As introduced, I am the Finance Administration Director for New Mexico Counties. I'm here today to represent Steve Kuperman and the New Mexico County Board so that we can kind of offer this esteemed award to you guys. We did this during our legislative conference for Bernaleo County. We do audit awards every year. And so I kind of want to go out of order because I'm going to talk about the large county audit award first. But before I do that, I definitely want to acknowledge, well, your wonderful Bernaleo County Clerk and our future President in New Mexico Counties, Linda Stover. She's an amazing woman. We're very grateful to have her. We're excited to have her leadership coming up, and we thank you for sharing her with us. Same with your treasurer, your assessor. They're all very, very involved in New Mexico Counties, and we're grateful for them as well, all your elected officials. So thank you for that. I just want to give a quick little story in my background. I used to be the Taos County Manager, and prior to that, I was the Finance Director up in Taos County. And I was hired as County Manager, I think, the same month, almost the same week as Ms. Morges Baca was. I think October of two thousand and fifteen, I started that job. Obviously, our resumes were much different. Hers was far more esteemed with a lot of experience and expertise. And let's just say, as I got to know her, I leaned on her often. I asked her for a lot of help, and she gave it to us, and I always was grateful for that. She shared the wonderful team you have at Bernaleo County. I got a lot of questions answered by different folks, and I really appreciated that. So Taos County definitely benefited from the experience that you got in your county manager. So, and that kind of sets off my tone today. Tone at the top is something that's so important to accountability. Tone at the top is something that is usually represented through best practices, accountability, and transparency. And I feel like your manager's office is one of the best at doing that. They certainly provide that to anyone in the manager's office, and it seems like that's an extension to all of your departments. And because of that, you've had continued excellence. And this is the second year that New Mexico Counties has given Bernaleo County the Large County Audit Award. And it's because it speaks to the principles of the tone at the top. Your best practice is you've had nineteen consecutive years of GFOA Certificate of Achievement. This is your second year winning this award, but you've probably been in the running every year. There's other great Class A counties in our state, but the last two years, Bernaleo County has just really seemed to exemplify the large county that you are, and we're grateful for that accountability and transparency. I mean, it's such a big entity that you guys have, and self-reporting issues, then identifying the source and fixing them in a transparent way is not just good for your county, but it's good for the state of New Mexico, and it provides examples for all the other counties that sometimes run into a problem. And how do you identify the problem and fix it? And your team does that well, and we're grateful for that. And then communication, it seems that you have great internal communication, but I can account to the external communication as well. Your team participates with our NMC affiliates, our boards, our policy committees. You're essential to legislation. The counties with those opportunities to teach us, and so we're grateful. So that kind of gets me moving into the special award, which was something we don't always do, but when it is important to identify that, we do. And this year, obviously, the CARES Act monies that were given on to the state of New Mexico and Bernaleo County and the city of Albuquerque, you guys got that money sooner than the rest of us. The state of New Mexico got it when you did, but the rest of the counties had to kind of figure out a process and get in line at the state to figure out how to get that money out the door. But Bernaleo County was way ahead, and I want to start really praising Ms. Shirley Reagan here because I've worked with her a lot. And she's a very, very professional finance person and very astute. And she participated in many of our calls and updates with Nico, the National Association of Counties, as a guide for her, an option and opportunity to learn all about the Treasury guidelines and as well as here, examples of other counties across the country and ways that they were getting that money out the door. And because you have a great team at Bernaleo County, I think she was able to enlist the help of your Economic Development Department, Ms. Mei Ling Vermiro, Mr. Marcos Gonzalez, and that great team also jumped in to learn as much as they could. And that was how you guys started your process. I really felt comfortable as we learned more and more about what Bernaleo County was putting together, that it was not just a process to get money out the door, but it was going to be an accountable process, the kind of process that you can stand behind and ultimately, a kind of process that you could share. And so it was developed with accountability, transparency, best practices, those tone-at-the-top principles. And it benefited, I think, every Bernaleo County taxpayer. But the reason NMC wanted to acknowledge Bernaleo County was really based on the willingness for your team to share all that information with all thirty-three counties. And that's what we're most grateful for, because you shared that information with all of us. I think we really got that CARES Act money into the hands of New Mexicans across the state. And quite frankly, I think the state of New Mexico was able to learn a few things from the process that Bernaleo County went through to come up with this accountable process, which I'm very grateful for. So I want to thank you, the Board of County Commissioners first, for providing and supporting a strong tone at the top and allowing your manager's office to do the same. And we're so grateful at New Mexico Counties. Ms. Shirley Reagan also does para, and she sits on the para, but she works really closely with New Mexico Counties in that aspect. Lisa Celia White sits on our insurance pool boards and is a great resource for us. We're always learning as much as we can from Bernaleo County so that the small counties can kind of piggyback on the deep bench you guys have. And we're grateful that you have that deep bench, but more so, we're grateful that you share it with everybody else. So, and before I finish, I just want to, one more time, thank all the other elected officials that work so hard. It's not just your manager's office, but it shows that you have good communication when your other elected offices are so well tied in. And I think it's just a testament to good government. Thank you, Chairman, Chairwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Cordova. That was a wonderful tribute. I wonder, would Shirley or I see Mei Ling Marcos, would you like to say anything about that? You've been so deeply involved in the CARES money and the finances over this past year. So is there anything you'd like to say?
Shirley, you want to go first? I mean, it all kind of started with you, so.
Okay, Madam Chair, Leandro, thank you very much. I wasn't expecting that. You know, it's just a part of my job. It's what I'm supposed to do for Bernaleo County as I represent you all and serve the community. And so we had the opportunity, because our population was greater than seven hundred thousand, to apply for direct allocation. So I got with Julie, and we worked on the paperwork. We got it sent in. And as we're finding with the government, with the federal government, they send you like two pages of information, and then you start down a path, and then they'll send you six more pages that are slightly different. And so we have a massive team of finance, procurement, economic development, just all over the county, just really working together with the EOC to manage those CARES fund and get them out the door. And our priority was, what can we really do to benefit the citizens? We did things for the employees, but what can we really do to benefit the citizens? And that's where Mei Ling and Marcos came in to help get that money out to the small businesses the quickest way that we could. So I'm just grateful to work for Bernaleo County. And I have people like Pam and my accounting folks, my budget folks, that really stepped up to the plate and just made the county look good, made my job easy. There's a lot of research. There's a lot of rules. There's a lot of regulations. I know a lot of times I'd say, no, can't do that, but maybe we can do it this way to make it work because the OIG was very strict. And every quarter, we have to do reporting. A lot of you don't know that. We're gonna come forth with some information on what we've spent the money on and all of that. But every quarter, we have to do a report to the Office of Inspector General of the U.S. Treasury. And with that, Pam and I have to enter into their grant module all of the information that we process in that quarter. And then Julie is the only one that can approve it as the chief executive officer. So then we go sit with her and Mark, and they go through it, and they go in and certify our report. And I'm happy to say that we've done three quarters, and we have not had a rejection of any of our reports. So I think that's a testament of the background work, like I said, the accountability and the integrity that's throughout Bernaleo County. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mei Ling.
Thanks, Shirley. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Leandro. It's nice to be recognized for the hard work, but it wasn't me, and it wasn't just Marcos. We had Sunela Melens with her extensive auditing background, and Dan Beeman and Kristen Fox, who were all part of this. And really, my job is easy because my boss lets me do my job, and there's a lot of trust. And so I appreciate that, and I appreciate being able to do what I do. And I am honored to have the position I have with the county and to work with a stellar team. Accounts payable was key in getting this done. Robert and his team helped make sure we got the checks out. You know, there was a lot of constant communication. The contact center helped a lot as far as taking those calls and fielding them. So it wasn't just economic development. It was the whole county. And we all just kind of came together and said, hey, this is what we need to do. And we did it, and it was amazing. We just, everybody jumped in. IT, Robert Benevitas was there. He was jawning on the spot anytime we needed anything. So it was easy because we work with a group of professionals that wanted to get it done. So I'd be remiss if I took credit for all of that, but it's nice to receive this award, and I thank you for it. And I'll turn it over to Marcos, and I hope, Madam Clerk, that that was an appropriate speech for you.
Chair and Association Counties, thank you so much for this. But let's tackle Mei Ling's words. It wasn't just us two, but a team of the entire county that came together to better serve our business owners, our residents, and making sure that we're able to continue efforts for the county. So I thank you, but this is for all the county employees that put so much work into making sure that operations continue every day.
Madam Chair.
If I might just let Pam say something. She was with the background as well, but that Audit and Accountability Award is really on her back and the people that work in her area and everybody throughout the county. So if she could say a little bit about that.
Sure.
Thank you, Shirley. Good evening, Madam Chair, Pascody, and Members of Commission. As you know, I'm Pamela Moon, Accounting and Budget Director. And we are so honored to have Mr. Cordova here with us tonight, presenting us all this information about this team at Bernaleo County that we all see all the work that they're doing. But, you know, it's so nice to be recognized by an outside entity that this is happening. This, as you mentioned, this is the second time we are the recipient of this award, and it's based on decades of consecutive years of excellence in financial reporting. I'm so proud to be part of our team. Developing strong internal controls is a goal of management and the Accounting and Budget Department. And I agree with Mr. Cordova that setting the tone from the top is very important. It's extremely important in gaining compliance from the entire county. So I need to thank our county manager, Julie Baca, and our deputy county manager, Finance Shirley Reagan, but also Jackie Sanchez, the department's assistant director, and all of the team is critical to implementing the internal controls of the county. Our entire team is amazing, and each person does their part to contribute to it all coming together. And in addition to this department, there's other departments that are involved, and they're very supportive of what we're doing. And so that it would include departments such as housing, budget, purchasing, IT, HR, and finance staff. So thank you for recognizing that. We really do appreciate it.
Commissioner O'Malley. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad that Julie Baca was mentioned. I mean, she takes the lead in all these efforts. And of course, you know, as Mr. Cordova mentioned, that, you know, they really look to the county for support because we have the resources. And historically, the county has always lent its resources to other counties, has taken the lead in many efforts, and has always been a resource. And I'm just really proud of that. We just don't hold stuff to ourselves. We really reach out and have been real help to all the smaller counties in the state. I know they really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. And I see County Manager Julie Morges Baca has rejoined us. I don't know if you heard all the praise for you, but there was a significant amount. So would you like to say something about this award?
I just, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I just, I think I've told you many, many times, I love what I do. This is my dream job, but I also have a dream team, and I have some wonderful Commissioners that provide the support that we need to just do what we need to do. And I do want to say, working within New Mexico Counties has been awesome. They've helped us. They're at the legislature going to bat for the counties continuously. And on all matters, I mean, they're just such a tremendous resource to them. So I want to thank them for their help. And again, we have the best county staff ever. I've always said that, and I mean it. And again, love my job, and I'm very grateful to have it and to serve you all and our community and your constituents. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. And thank you, Mr. Cordova, for presenting this. And I also wish to extend my gratitude and congratulations to this team who just makes things happen. Like you said, Shirley, it's not just about taking care of us within the Bernaleo County staff, but it's really about taking care of the people that we represent in our communities of Bernaleo County. And I know with that CARES money, it was just flying out the door to get to people who needed it the most during last year, during the height of the COVID pandemic. And I know we're going to keep doing good things for our communities, so thank you. So now it's time to move on to public comment and communications. And before we hear public comment, we will proceed with Communication, item six A. From the University of New Mexico, we have CEO Kate Becker to give the presentation on the UNMH report for the second quarter of FY twenty-one. Kate Becker?
Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. Happy to be here. Our quarterly report in our standard format is in your packet. And I'm gonna take a few minutes just to talk about some themes there. But the main thing I would like to do tonight is introduce our new Executive Vice President for the Health Science Center and CEO for the Health System, Dr. Douglas Zadonis. Dr. Zadonis comes to us from University of California, San Diego, most recently, has a wonderful background. And if it's all right, I'd like to ask for him to have a few minutes just to introduce himself and tell you a little bit about why he loves New Mexico.
Yes, we'd love to hear from you, Mr. Zadonis.
Right. Thank you so much, Madam Chair and Commissioners and other distinguished colleagues. I'm really honored and pleased to be able to be a part of your meeting already. I can feel like I'm part of a family sharing about core values and the tone from the top. I love all of the phrases and words I'm hearing. And so I just want to thank CEO Becker for inviting me to. And so I just want to thank CEO Becker for inviting me to be able to be here. I thought I'd share just a little bit about myself to put it into a context. I'm a psychiatrist. I'm an addiction psychiatrist. So some of the issues that I know are important to counties like behavioral health, substance use. I've had the pleasure to work with a number of you already through the homeless coordinating council. And throughout my career, that's been important for me, working, fighting stigma, fighting health inequities and helping people who are homeless or other matters that need to be addressed. I've also been fortunate in that space, whether I was at Yale University or Rutgers or UMass, other places that I've been in prior to UCSD and here, to work closely with counties, to work closely with cities and states. And I think it's so important working together. I'm excited in my role to be here. My wife and I have moved here and purchased a home already. And we're, I'm in my first 60 days of a lot of listening tours, meeting with faculty, students, staff, the patient and family advisory councils, a variety of different ethnic groups, learning a lot about the history of New Mexico, the Hispanic community, the Native American communities are, I know are so important for the work that we're doing here. And I've led a lot of diversity efforts throughout my career. With a name like Zedonis, you come from somewhere. Both my parents came off the boat from Latvia. And so I grew up very bicultural. My dad was a minister in the community and south side of Bethlehem. So all of those things were important to me in my own growing up. And I've, I feel like a lot of the values that I'm experiencing here at UNM at the hospital and also within the work at the university are resonating really well for me. So this, I'm honored and humbled to be here and I look forward to learning from all of you on this. I know that access to care is critical. And so how we can be working together, I, my hope is that we also, in addition, are great tertiary and quaternary hospital, a new tower, that we also expand our population health and our primary care network. Been doing a lot in telehealth before COVID and I think that's also an important part of the equation. I also, I have a daughter who's 27 and she works on a COVID unit in West LA in a veterans hospital. And she's a dietitian, so I love to hear about the importance of nutrition that you were talking about. Food insecurity is really a huge issue that needs to be better addressed. So I'm happy to hear about your work in nutrition. On a personal level, I, I like to bring mindfulness in my own life and bring it into the kind of clinical practices as we think about healthy aging. So I'm looking forward to learning more about what you all are doing and and how I can continue to learn as I'm here. I want to also thank the county a lot for the mill levy and the other support that you do and the various projects. And in my role, I'm also thinking about clinical research, education, community engagement and how we blend those together. So I'm looking forward to learning from you all, listening to you. And I wish it wasn't COVID so we could be hanging out in a room and, and getting to know each other better, but I'm sure that will happen in time. And thank you for being, for my being able to have a little space here and happy to answer any questions, but also pass it back to Kate. Thank you.
Thank you so much and welcome, Mr. Zedonis. And so Kate, would you like to take it away?
Thank you. So just a couple of things. First of all, we talked a little bit about COVID. So many of the statistics you'll see in our report, you'll see our lengths of stay are longer, our clinic visits are down. Those are many impacts from that fall spike that we had, October, November and December. We had a very, very high peak of COVID. Thankfully, those numbers are coming down now across the state in terms of spread and then in terms of who we're seeing in the hospital. So we're working hard to vaccinate as many people as we can so that we can try to get ahead of that before we have another spike. You're probably aware, hopefully you've seen, we have a vaccine clinic at the pit. So that's pretty exciting. And we continue to vaccinate as many people as we can. We're working closely with the Department of Health as all the hospital systems are to make sure that we're accessing vaccine supply. So over the next few weeks, what you'll see is just watching with the Department of Health for what the supply we're getting is from the federal government. Some good news on the horizon. The end of this month is the Hearing for Emergency Use Authorization for the Johnson and Johnson Vaccine. So that gives us another tool in the toolkit. And that's a one-shot vaccine, which makes it a lot easier to logistically deliver rather than having to give a shot and then have people come back three weeks later and give that second shot. So working hard to get that accomplished. And then just a brief update on hospital tower construction. If you have driven down Lomas lately, you have seen that we have really kicked off some big construction work. So that's phase two of the project. That will straighten out Yale, north of Lomas, take out the roundabout, begin some site preparation work. And then that will be the construction of the new parking garage. So that will actually go through the next about a year. And then we'll be kicking off construction of the tower itself and we're still on time and on budget to open in October of 2024. So with that, happy to stand for any questions.
Are there any questions? Well, Kate, Ms. Becker, I think you did a great job and thank you for delivering some good news. I'm feeling very optimistic for this year. So thank you for being a part of that.
Thank you. We're happy to be in 2021.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we will move on to public comment. I just want to say that I really appreciate Julianne Baca and Paul Evans and all of our people who work behind the scenes on our technology. These meetings, we had to scramble, right? Last year to get them on Zoom and stream them live over YouTube and GovTV and, and in different media. And so it's been a little tricky being able to patch people in to do live public comment. But I am pretty sure I speak for all elected officials when I say that this is my favorite part. I love hearing from, from the public, hearing from my people. So I am looking forward to this and I, I just want to tell you how this is going to go. This is our first virtual meeting welcoming live public comment. So thank you for joining and signing up in advance. You will have 90 seconds to share your comments. You will then be notified when your time is up. You will then be muted and moved to the waiting room. Okay. Should any of the commissioners have follow-up questions on your comments? You will have an opportunity to answer. So Julianne, how many have signed up to speak?
So we received four written comments that were sent to commissioners directly. And we have two that are, that were signed up to speak this evening. We did have a bit of a technical issue with the link. But we have Ms. Alexandria Taylor on, followed by Marshall Martinez.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed with comments.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and I guess to be the first one to make a live public comment. My name is Alexandria Taylor and I'm the Deputy Director of the New Mexico Coalition of Sexual Assault Programs. NMCSAP leads the state, state's efforts to reduce sexual abuse and sexual violence. And I am here to ask you to oppose the resolution that will be presented before you tonight on House Bill 4, the New Mexico Civil Rights Act. The coalition supports HB4 because the New Mexico Civil Rights Act includes access to justice for sexual, sexual violence victims in educational settings. And we think it's really important that civil remedies promote access to the single system designed to provide victims with the monetary resources to engage in healing forms of justice. Having access to the resources necessary to heal and recover from trauma increases stability factors and decreases the impact of generational trauma on families. This is a public health framework to access to justice for survivors as we talk about criminal justice reform in our state. This is also a deeply intersectional issue as Black, Indigenous, Latinx and other students of color, male identifying survivors, LGBTQ young folks and those with disabilities are most disproportionately impacted by these abuses. And so again, I ask you to oppose the resolution that's going to be presented before you later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Marshall Martinez.
Thank you. Madam Chair and members of the commission, I'm Marshall Martinez. I'm the Executive Director of Equality New Mexico, the statewide LGBTQ civil rights organization. LGBTQ people in this country have had a decades-long fight to achieve basic civil rights, recognized constitutional rights, and we are not quite done. While we have done good work to achieve some basic policy protections, our protections have always hinged on the fact that our government would step in to protect us. If we've learned anything over the years, especially the last four, it is that we cannot simply rely on the goodness and inherent fairness of governments, national or local, to protect us from basic violations of our hard-earned civil rights. Queer and trans New Mexicans have stories about our basic civil rights being violated by law enforcement officials and local government entities in a myriad of ways. The New Mexico Civil Rights Act, if passed, would be one step closer to dismantling systemic homophobia, transphobia and racism. We approach this legislation not from a place of hostility, but one of harm reduction. We have long been stuck in a David versus Goliath situation when it comes to the power of those acting on behalf of our governments. All we are asking for is to be given an opportunity to fight for our basic civil rights. All we want is our day in court. And so I come before you tonight to ask you as well to oppose the resolution that opposes House Bill 4, the New Mexico Civil Rights Act. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Julianne. So on to approval of minutes. I will move to approve the January 26, 2021 administrative meeting minutes. Do I have a second? Commissioner Barbois, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Looks like none opposed. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barbois. Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley. I think.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please provide resolution numbers for items 8C, 8H, 8J and ordinance number for item 8I.
Yes ma'am. C1 will be FR 2021-17. H2 will be AR 2021-18. Number I is ordinance number 2021-3. J2 is AR 2021-19. 3 is AR 2021-20. 4 is AR 2021-21.
Okay, thank you very much. So I will move to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Commissioner Casada, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, you're up again. Please call the roll.
Mr. Barbois.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson. Commissioner O'Malley. Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So moving.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Commissioner. Commissioner Barbois.
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize Baron Jones, who in the consent agenda is my, appointed to the Detention Facility Management Oversight Advisory Board. He is, actually lives right in my district, which I'm proud to have representation from my district on that board. He's been involved as part of the Smart Justice Program, also a coalition called New Mexico Save. He's worked on different aspects of the criminal justice reform and detention. And I'm, I'm proud that he'll be joining that and just wanted to both thank him for volunteering his time to serve on that. And just to recognize his, his strengths that we're adding. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome to him. And I appreciate his, his service, his commitment to serve. So moving on to adoption of resolution, Madam Clerk, please issue resolution numbers for items 9A and 9B, please.
Yes ma'am. 9A is AR 2021-22. 9B is 2021, AR 2021-23.
Thank you very much. And so the first one I am sponsoring, it's supporting broadband expansion. And so it, do we actually have somebody from the broadband team who's been working on this, who could talk a little bit about this? I'm not, see, oh, Clay Campbell. Would you like to speak to the, I know you've been working very hard on the, everything around broadband expansion. So could you say a little bit about this, please?
Certainly Commissioner. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this resolution supports the bill that Senator Badia has in the Senate right now. And in trying to address the situation in the rural parts of Bernalillo County, especially in the East Mountains, it's, there's a lot of issues going on there that explain why broadband isn't as strong and robust there as it is in town. And it's Bernalillo County and thanks to the leadership of Commissioner Piscotti is really trying to catalyze solutions out there. And, and so we're, we have a number of steps underway and one of them is we're trying to go out and issue an RFP prospectively with a telecom provider so that we can be lined up to jointly prepare and submit a federal application that is required by most grants that the Department of Commerce or Department of Agriculture offer for local governments. They, there has to be some kind of partnership. So we're, we're doing a lot of education of ourselves and of the community in doing frequently asked questions and working closely with the village of De Harris to try to, A, understand the situation and B, address it. So this resolution really speaks to the need in the East Mountains where speeds are basically okay. But when you add multiple devices going on at the same time, that's when things really slow down. So kudos to the commissioner for the foresight to try and get out in front of this as much as possible and to lend the support that Bernalillo County can provide to improving the situation out there. Thank you.
Thanks Clay. And yes, this has been a priority of mine from day one, being a resident of the East Mountains and knowing how spotty the internet service can be and especially during, now during the pandemic, when so many of us are working from home. Students are trying to do their homework, be educated at home and just quality of life issues, running small businesses. There's so many reasons that we need to really expand our broadband service and really improve it. And you know, I, my hope is that by focusing right now on the East Mountains, which is probably the most, the most difficult part of the county because, because of our geography and our low density population, things like that, that what we learn can apply eventually to other parts of the county, other parts of the state. And so yes, I'm very happy to sponsor this, supporting legislation around broadband expansion. I wanted, again, in addition to you, Clay, the team with Richard Meadows and Kathy Cortez and Floyd Velazquez. I, I, I don't know if there's even anybody else. It seems like this team has been so great working on this. So I appreciate everybody who's been working on this. Did you want to say anything else or are you done, Clay?
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, then I will move to approve administrative resolution AR 2021-22, declaring that improvements to an expansion of broadband services in the East Mountains is a priority of Bernalillo County. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, Commissioner, Madam Clerk, please take the roll. Okay, Commissioner, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Barbois.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
So.
Thank you. And moving on, Commissioner Benson, House Bill for New Mexico Civil Rights Act. Will you speak to this, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would like to withdraw the published resolution for this item.
Okay, thank you. And do we need to take a vote on withdrawing this? Or, okay, no, okay. Would you like to speak to why you're withdrawing this?
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you all for your time. And thank you also, Ms. Taylor and Mr. Martinez, for your public comments. We appreciate you here in front of the community. And please come back, keep talking, we want to hear you. And meet with me. I'd love to meet with you. I'm all ears. But as anyone who would have read the original bill could clearly see, this bill really didn't protect anybody's civil rights. And I'm a fierce advocate, as is the County of Burnaleo, for civil rights and advancing that cause. And the way it was originally written, there was no justice that was going to be served for civil rights. Now, trial attorneys were going to benefit quite a bit. Counties, governments were going to suffer, and so were the local taxpayers. But individual civil rights weren't going to be impacted. So but since then, Speaker E golf has listened, and I really appreciate that. He's amended the bill and addressed some of our concerns. So a committee substitute has been passed as of February eighth that included amendments such as limiting cap on damages to $2 million, including attorney's fees. And we appreciate these changes. I feel that they're moving in the right direction. But what I want to be clear of again is that Burnaleo County, and I assume I can speak for the rest of my colleagues, care very much about civil rights. So we want them to move forward, and this bill still needs some work in order to do that. Unfortunately, the title of the bill is called Civil Rights, and so, you know, a lot of stuff can be hidden in there. But New Mexico needs a civil rights bill. We need one. So we want to make sure that it serves everybody, though, not just a certain industry. So what I'd like to do is ask that our county manager and her staff can continue to reach out to the legislators sponsoring this bill and address our concerns in terms of the impact that this would have on entire communities. And so that's basically it. One last thing, you know, I'm not an expert on the actual legalities of it. And so I've invited Steve Copelman tonight to speak to some of the technicalities. Steve, if you have anything to say, feel free. But thank you all for your time. And again, I feel like it's moving in the right direction. Not sure it's quite there yet, but that's why I want to withdraw the resolution. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. And yes, Steve Copelman, I would love for you to come on and tell us a little. I believe there have been some updates, some amendments to this bill at this point. Could you just update us on this, please?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you. And I was very, very proud and very glad to hear Leandro Cordova from our office talk about the awards for Burnaleo County, working with Shirley and Julie. You have an amazing team, so I really appreciate that. And a shout out, of course, to our President-elect Linda Stover. We've been doing a lot of work, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, on House Bill Four. It really dates back to September, when the Civil Rights Commission began its proceedings. And we've had testimony before a number of interim committees. We testified that his New Mexico counties and our insurance broker before the Civil Rights Commission. And by a five-four vote, the Commission voted to move forward with the bill. And as Commissioner Benson indicated, the initial bill that was introduced had no caps on damages at all. And we were very, very concerned that all it would take is a couple of situations where a small county, a small city, or even the state of Burnaleo County could get hit with a $50, $60 million verdict. And the question is, how do you pay that? So we had, I had numerous meetings and discussions with the Speaker. And he did make some changes. The House Judiciary Committee last Friday heard substitute House Bill Four, and it did put a cap on damages at $2 million, which is inclusive of attorney's fees. It also narrowed the scope of the bill to the New Mexico Bill of Rights, which we really appreciated. Also, it provided expressly for judicial and legislative immunity. And so it's come a long way. I did have a conversation with the Speaker Monday morning, and we did talk about some issues that we still felt we really were hoping to get some changes made. And it may seem a little technical and in the weeds from a legal standpoint, but one of the things that concerns me the most is the insurance structure that we have now for law enforcement. And New Mexico counties covers 29 of the 33 counties when it comes to law enforcement, and that includes sheriff's offices and detention centers. And the way it works is Burnaleo County has a deductible for law enforcement. Then the insurance pool picks up everything up to $2 million. At the $2 million point, we go out and we procure reinsurance with a company called Berkeley. And it's very difficult, because of the exposure and liability of jails, to even get reinsurance. We've been through three or four different reinsurers over the last 10 or 15 years. And it's just the exposure is great, and we all know how difficult it is to run jails and how claims come up. So the attachment point is at 2 million. They provide coverage, $3 million excess of the 2 million. And then on top of that, a number of the Class Eight counties, including Burnaleo, get umbrella coverage. So in effect, for a law enforcement occurrence, and that's an incident, you right now have $10 million of coverage. And there's an aggregate limit, too. And so, you know, that seems to be more than adequate. And it's and the insurance pools, you know, have worked real hard. Shirley and Lisa Sidely are actually on the Board of Directors of the New Mexico County Insurance Authority. So the biggest problem, the big problem we had is when the bill was introduced, the one reinsurance company that would write that layer pretty much said, if this bill passes, we will not be able to write reinsurance for law enforcement in New Mexico. So I met with the Speaker, and we talked about the issue. And he did come back with the $2 million cap, but we still have a fundamental problem, which is it's not $2 million per occurrence, which is how our insurance pool works and how most insurers work. It's $2 million per claim, which means that if you have two plaintiffs involved in one incident, the cap is actually 4 million and not 2 million. And so I was on the phone with John Chino, our insurance broker, and he's getting in touch and trying to set up a meeting with the representative from Berkeley. But we're really concerned that if it stands that it's the $2 million per claim as opposed to per occurrence, that we may lose our reinsurance. And if that happens, we're going to be in a lot of trouble because that means counties like Burnaleo only have $2 million of coverage. We have a $3 million gap. And then the umbrella policy won't be in effect anymore because you need to have underlying insurance. So that's one big issue that we're working on. There are a couple of other technical ones. One is that federal civil rights claims, and we know the issue with qualified immunity. But in federal civil rights, it's a high standard. It's not just negligence to actually prevail on a civil rights claim. You have to show that, in most cases, a deputy or a detention officer acted with deliberate indifference. And so it's a high standard. We're concerned that the way this bill reads, it very well may be interpreted to just be negligence claims. And if it turns out that it's merely negligence claims, that means possibly, and again, we don't, we won't know until we have lawsuits, but we're worried that you could have an automobile accident, a land use case. For example, you know, Burnaleo County works on the slope of road. They do construction. Somebody's house gets flooded, and obviously, it's negligence. And normally, you know, we settle the claim. It's a property claim. We're concerned that a that it may now transform into a civil rights claim because you're arguably taking somebody's property without due process. And so I did talk with the Speaker about the standard, whether it's deliberate indifference or negligence. If it's negligence, we're going to see virtually every single tort case become a civil rights case. And then the counties are responsible, not only for the damages, but for plaintiffs' attorney's fees. And so we're concerned that, you know, a $50,000 case could become a $500,000 case. So these are technical points. There's one other, under federal rules, there's what's called Rule 68 of civil procedure, where you can make an offer of judgment. And that is, early in the litigation, for example, we know we have a bad case. We need to settle it. And so we, under the federal rules, we can make an offer, let's say, $100,000 as how we evaluate the case. And we offer that early on, before the case gets too involved and too far down the road. The plaintiffs then have to decide, are we going to accept that offer? Is it fair? Or are we going to reject it and go to trial? If they reject it and go to trial and collect less than $100,000, they don't get their attorney's fees from the date the offer was made. And we think that's important as a way of trying to settle cases early and prevent litigation, prevent having to go to trial. The way we read the bill now and local law is that there is no Rule 68 offer of judgment. So we're concerned that even if we try to settle cases for reasonable amounts, we won't be able to, and that there is an incentive for the plaintiff's attorneys because they automatically get their attorney's fees. And so those are the issues we have. Again, we really appreciate the Speaker and Representative Lewis making the changes they did. As Commissioner Benson said, we think it's really a step in the right direction. We are communicating with the Speaker. We've had conversations. We're working with the Municipal League, also, and the Public School Insurance Authority. I think we're all agree that these technical changes we'd love to see made. But that's really where we are now, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. And again, you know, we're not, we're not opposing the concept. We're not, but we feel that there needs to be some safeguards in place. You know, right, right now, for example, and this hasn't come out, but under the New Mexico Tort Claims Act, as it's currently written, an individual can bring a lawsuit against law enforcement for violation of the state constitution. That's actually in the law now, but there's a cap of $1,050,000 on that. And then there are subtopics that are less. So there already is the ability to sue law enforcement, you know, for a violation of the state constitution. We understand that there may be other areas. And we've, you know, we've offered to sit down with the Speaker and the drafters and see if we can maybe laser focus the concerns a little more, so it's not such a broad bill. And again, we're concerned that the way the bill's written now, we won't know for a few years as cases make their way through the appellate courts. But we're concerned that potentially it could have a very, very materially negative impact on the state, county, cities, and schools. And by the time the legislature gets around to fixing it, there may be a lot of damage done. So we're hoping to avoid that, and we're hoping to be able to still effect some changes and amendments, if not in the House, hopefully in the Senate, before it gets final approval. And thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. This is a very important topic, and I appreciate you going into some detail on this and explaining that. Are there any questions from the commissioners or comments? Commissioner Barbois.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Can you hear me correctly? Yes, okay. So I just want to, and thank you for Commissioner Benson for, you know, retracting your thing and, you know, pushing us to be good ambassadors of our county dollars and programs and the services we provide. I also, you know, I'm thankful to have Mr. Copelman here. I also have been following this bill because I, you know, reacted differently than it seemed for most of the other commissioners when this first came about. And so I've been wanting to pay attention to. And so, you know, we have Mr. Copelman here, definitely speaking to one side of it from the hearings I've been a part of at the state legislature. There's a whole other side that says that some of these doomsday quotes are not accurate. So I appreciate how we tease through where we are in actual danger that hopefully isn't just completely by political will. I want to also really clearly, yeah, for several years, I've worked within a different community of ventures. And I have two friends that, I have three friends that probably should not even be my friends. Their name are Mr. Kenneth Alice, Mr. Stephen Torres and his wife, Renita, and Mr. Mike Gomez. And all three of these men who I have had very long and intimate times and conversations with them about how their sons were shot by police officers, how we collected like tens of thousands of signatures and that all that they wanted, all they hoped for was not even real justice, was just indictment, just to see their day in court. Right? And these were, those were only three of the many stories of a grandfather having to talk about his son, grandson getting shot in the back and then subsequently kicked in the ribs multiple times, the autopsy report shows, of having to hear parents and mothers and sisters talk about the inflections done. I know I have experienced within my own family abuses. So, you know, the only people that are afraid of this bill are folks that would be in violation of our constitutional rights. So I have been in the work for over those years. I haven't really seen legislation that actually gets to it. I don't know that this state legislation gets to what we need. I think, like others have said, it's a step in the right direction. I think that we can't continue to throw out. It's actually re-traumatizing to hear about our families' lives and hope for justice, glimmers, these small glimmers of hope for justice and for a fair hearing and trial that they, that we're throwing around, rather, the numbers to what it may cost to them. And that's not to say I don't want to protect our county dollars and programs. I'm saying that we have to approach this in a way that actually gets to what is addressing it. How do we still protect dollars and protect our programs and services while also giving people that right? There is not a group of people that are coming to the defense every single time. Right now, people have, people that are victims of violence and victims of constitutional violations are the ones that have to carry the burden if they can carry that, right? Carry the burden of filing a federal lawsuit, which takes lots of resources, time consumption, while they are facing the trauma victimization. So I personally have two cousins that are law enforcement officers. I have a nephew that's a firefighter. And I have family that lives in the communities most impacted by abuses of force by the police officers. And so my people are on every side of this issue. And so when we approach this, I hope that we can approach it with thoroughness and not take, you know, doomsday, you know, fury and send us into fury that we can actually look at how are we solving some of these situations? Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Casada, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, as a person who has grown up in these communities, I'm from these communities. And many times, and many years ago in the 80s, you know, I've had my own. you know, I've had my own dealings, dealings with, you know, law enforcement. So, you know, with that being said, we're in a time in this country where we have to have compromise. And that we start, we need to start moving the needle forward. For many, many years, nobody would even have these, these conversations. So I'd like to really thank, you know, Speaker E golf, Representative Georgine Lewis, who I've made some calls and talked to myself. She's an amazing person. And we need to start moving things forward. I agree with Commissioner Barboya that we can't always fall into the worst case scenarios. But I really appreciate the compromise. I think that we're showing here in the state of New Mexico what compromise is, what it looks like. And that we're willing all as citizens of this great state to move the needle forward when it comes to justice and equal justice. So I appreciate the conversation. I do feel that, you know, we got to be careful that we're not setting up the legal community for a way in to make more money. We know how, we know how they think, we know how, how they work. I hope they don't sue me for saying that. But, you know, we know how that works. And that we have to be careful on how we move things forward. But again, in agreeing with Commissioner Barboya, we need to move forward. We can't be afraid to move forward and look at what equal justice looks like and what our civil rights look like based on the color of our skin or what neighborhoods we grow up in or what our sexual preference may be. And, you know, that all needs to start being weeded out and looking at how we, everybody feels equal and equal protections under the law. So that's just my statement. Again, Mr. Commissioner Benson, thank you, you know, for being that, that voice of, of wanting to look at what compromise looks like. And, and, you know, and I'd like again, thank Mr. Copland, Copland for his, his comments also. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I love this conversation and, and we need more of it in the community, just like Commissioner Casada said. Commissioner Barboya, I love your heart. I love where it's, your position's coming from and your experience and your friends and your friends that shouldn't be friends, but they are because of tragic circumstances. And, and I have friends that have suffered under that as well. And, and that's why I think we do need a bill. But as this bill's written, there will not be additional accountability to law enforcement. And, and if you, and we have family that's law enforcement and I, I come from a family of law enforcement, there's a lot of stress involved there. And when they die, there's nobody to sue. You know, like as we've seen Officer Jarrett this past week. And they're, they're dealing with a lot of stress. It's a very complicated issue. And so same with CYFD, listening to some of the, the speaking at the House and reading the paper this morning, you talk about abuses that have happened, not necessarily abuses, but mistakes that have been made with CYFD that's led to death and it's tragic and it's heartbreaking. But if you've worked with the folks at CYFD, these are social workers that are dealing with an insane level of stress and, and they've seen the worst, sickest parts of humanity. And they're, they're trying to make decisions and they've been told, kids belong with their parents. And so they send them back with their parents and then the kid dies, you know? And so the, the solution isn't to allow the family to sue the county and affect all the taxpayers while those decisions are still being made, right? I think there's, there, there needs to be, you know, we need to come together and look at all the pieces and not the unintended consequences because we don't want to scare social workers away. Now, the, the police department is trying to recruit social workers in a field that's already thin. Social workers don't have enough social workers, much less police officers. We got it, and we don't want to discourage that, right? And we don't want to villainize the, the good law enforcement officers and the good social workers. And that's my concern, especially the way their bill was originally written. It, it really wasn't addressing that. And, and we do need to address it, just like Commissioner Barboya was saying, so. Really, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I, I appreciate this really, Commissioner Casada, your hand is still up. I don't know if you have another comment or, okay. I appreciate this very thoughtful and honest discussion. And I, I know that we probably all received a lot of emails this afternoon asking us to not oppose civil rights. And each time I saw that subject line, it made me cringe because nobody here wants to oppose civil rights. And I am so heartened by this conversation we're having right here in public saying that we all do want civil rights and we want to do it in a thoughtful way, a meaningful way that doesn't have unintended consequences. You know, that would maybe like gut our county programs that actually help our vulnerable population. So it is, it's complicated and I, I appreciate all of you as my colleagues, I appreciate people who have reached out to us. And I hope that we can continue this beyond this meeting. It's so important. And so I do hope the conversation continues. Thank you. And so we will move on to approvals. Collective bargaining agreement between AFSMI Council 18, Local 3908 Foreman. And we have Bernadette Perez and Melissa Beebe to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Melissa Beebe. I am the Labor Relations ADA Manager with the Human Resources Department. The item I am bringing for your approval this evening is in reference to negotiated changes to the collective bargaining agreement for AFSMI Council 18, Local 3908, also known as the Foreman Union. The county's management team was comprised, comprised of myself, the HR Director, Bernadette Perez, the Fire Chief and Deputy Health and Public Safety, Greg Perez, Deputy County Manager of Finance, Shirley Reagan, and our recently retired Chief Negotiator, John Martinez. The members of the union team included the President Brad Zellner, Brandon McDonnell, and Rob Trombley. The county and the negotiating team of AFSMI Local 3908 commenced negotiations on June 29th of 2020 for two non-economic issues pursuant to Article 29 in the collective bargaining agreement. We reached tentative agreements on those articles on December 11th, 2020. The union ratified the changes unanimously on January 11th, 2021. The first article we negotiated was for Article 2, which is recognition. In that article, we identified positions that were newly added to the bargaining unit as well as updates to notification requirements. And the second article that was negotiated was for Article 9, Location Area Preference Bidding, where a new section was added to the collective bargaining agreement, which allows for work area location bidding process. And that concludes my presentation on this item and I'd like to open up for any question. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, do we have a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement for AFSMI Council 18, Local 3908?
For approval. You're on mute, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, you're on.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Thank you. I heard Commissioner Barboya make the motion. Commissioner Casada, would you like to second that? Was that a second? Okay, perfect. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call the roll.
Mr. Barboya.
Aye.
Mr. Benson. Mr. O'Malley.
Thank you. I've been popping in and out. Things happened with my, not everybody's presence. I don't know, I'm just experiencing that. I really didn't, I couldn't get on and.
Okay. Commissioner O'Malley, this is under approvals, the collective bargaining agreement between.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Madam Chairman Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair, for Scotty.
Aye. Thank you, that passed unanimously. Next up, discussion. Homeless Assistance Discussion and Update, Margarita Chavez Sanchez to provide an update.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Hi, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I just really quick before we bring Margarita and Chief Pettis on, wanted to just kind of acknowledge your request. You wanted us to reach out, to look into what we could do for our very vulnerable homeless population. And so we were able to secure at this point $500,000. And we immediately contacted Director Carol Pierce from the city of Albuquerque because of the need for, you know, it, it looked like there was a need for additional vouchers, housing vouchers. And she said that at this point that they did not need them, but we will be in touch with them to see how else we can assist them. So what we're currently doing is we have, the county is actually running a wellness hotel very successfully. But of course, with our great partners from the city and the state who are actually funding it. And, and like I say, the county is operating at 100%. And so because it is so successful and we are providing housing for homeless, our homeless population, we thought, why reinvent the wheel? Let's, let's add six more rooms to the current wellness hotel that we're operating. And then in addition to that, we'd like to add some money to our Community Connections Program, our housing program, and that would clear individuals that are on our waiting list. So again, another initiative that we don't want to reinvent the wheel, but we want to enhance what we're currently doing. And I want to say Chief Greg Pettis, our Deputy County Manager, also for Health and Public Safety and Margarita and their staff are doing a phenomenal job with these initiatives. And of course, Betty Valdez, always with her expertise. So I'm going to let them speak because they can actually give you a glimpse on what's really going on and, and an intimate view on, on what's happening. But real good stuff that's going on and a shout out to Ben Chavez. He's doing a great, great job, so. Chief Pettis, Margarita.
Great. Thank you, Julie, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So Julie is right, we have been now for the last three months running a wellness hotel that is located in the Northeast Heights. Obviously, we can't divulge the, the location. But we have been running that hotel with about 46 rooms that have been filled from basically the day we opened it. This is made available by the city of Albuquerque and the state who are paying for the, the hotel itself. We're absolutely running at 100% from intake to making sure rooms are clean, to making sure meals are delivered, making sure through Margarita's group that case management is on site. All eight to five, Monday through Friday, we're making sure that people are getting to their medical appointments. Anything that you can think of, we're doing. We're preparing to start bringing some recreational stuff up to the kids because what makes our hotel unique from the others that the city is running, and the city has four other hotels that they're currently operating, along with the state. Ours is for families with children only. So it's, it's one that has a little bit of a different focus. So it's important that we have a hotel that has solid wifi to allow kids to get to school and, and to be able to do their studies while, while having a roof over their head and hopefully, you know, good food in their bellies. And now if we can start to produce some type of recreational after-school type activities through Enrico's group, that's kind of our next phase. So to Julie's point, the county manager's point, we are looking to add an additional six rooms in dialogue with the, the city. Really, believe it or not, the city is stating that the need for this type of service is down right now. But we want to still be able to provide it. So again, the easiest and quickest way to do that is adding another six rooms to the hotel that currently is housing these families. And again, we have 46 rooms right now and I believe it was 143, 44 is the total number there. Last I looked at, 70 of those were children. So we're, we're making an impact where it probably matters the most and that's with the youth. So we'll continue to do that. I'll turn it over to Margarita because that's only one, one component of it. That's immediate help to those most in need. But I think we also have to focus on that longer term help. What happens when this hotel closes down in, in mid-June? Where do these families go? Is there something we can do now to get them set up for continued success? And that's absolutely where Margarita, Betty and their team come into play. So Margarita.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you, Chief Pettis and Madam Manager, Baca. Again, it is really important that we think about the full housing continuum. I always kind of get on that soapbox and ensure that we are working on addressing the cadre of, of housing needs in the community. As Chief Pettis mentioned, we will be able to identify budget for an additional six rooms through June. That is roughly $44,100 just for the cost associated with the voucher itself. That does not include the cost of the meals and cleaning and additional supports that are added into that motel voucher support. So we predict it'll be roughly about $100,000 to get us to that point of the, of June. Above and beyond that, again, it is important for us to focus on permanent supportive housing. That permanent supportive housing is the stopgap that many of these families are needing to address. While the motel is, is great in the short term, it gets them out of the cold, it puts a roof over their head, and it creates a better opportunity for the youth to be able to access educational needs. Now, especially since school is done via Zoom. But again, we are working with Betty and her team. We have a proposal that will be going to the BHI Subcommittee in their coming meetings now in March to increase the capacity to Community Connections, which currently has a significantly long waiting list. And so that additional funding will be able to allow us to draw down that waiting list and provide permanent supportive housing along that continuum. It is important to note that we have two other short-term motel voucher programs in place. One is our partnership with the APS McKinney Vento Program where we are housing families who are, have been unhoused on account of COVID. And Madam Chair, with your support, we are hopefully identifying some longer-term sustainable funding for that program. So again, we are working to build out those, those housing supports for families who have lost their, their housing due to COVID. And then again, that the single site that's coming down the road and our scattered site models through Community Connections.
Okay, thank you. And I, did anybody else want to add anything? Because I, I'd like to just kind of give a shout out to some other things that we are doing. This evening, we passed the about $5 million for the Emergency Rental Relief, I believe it's called. And so that, we're working on the application process, which is expected to be up on, by March 1st, we're anticipating. And also the program that I initiated where people can donate money directly into our Quality of Life Fund that would go to purchase motel vouchers for families and children through the McKinney Vento Program. So are there any questions? Seeing none? And thank you, Commissioner Casada. I know that you also got an initiative through giving $500 grants to families, to people in need. Did you want to say a little something about that?
No, I'm just very grateful for the staff at Burnley County for supporting me on this. You know, like we said earlier in this meeting, it's okay to come up with a great idea and it's okay to try to have Julie find the money. But it, it doesn't happen if we don't have the staff to, to put it out there and it's very complicated. It's not an easy thing to do. But yeah, they did a great job and I guarantee you, our community will be extremely happy to get a little bit of money, to get some groceries, you know, pay some utilities, just to do a little bit more to keep us hanging in there. We're, we're, we're close, you know? We're, I, I truly believe in my heart that we're going to start slowly opening up and we're going to slowly get back to whatever the new normal is going to be. And, you know, we, we've become the champions through government, you know? Sometimes government isn't too big. Sometimes government is just big enough, you know? uh, you know, to, to, to take on the challenges of the needs of the community. Um, and, and so, uh, all, all of you other commissioners who supported this initiative, uh, you know, you did the work. Um, I just, I just wanted to try to figure out what I could do. And you guys supported me on that. And so all, all the Burnley County Commissioners should be proud of the work that they did. It wasn't just me. So thank you.
Thanks. And, um, yeah. I, I, I second that, Commissioner Casada. I, I appreciate everybody who has been working so hard, um, to really help people in our community. So if that's it, I will announce the next commission meetings. Tuesday, February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, we have a double header coming up. We've got Board of Finance at four PM. And we then have administrative meeting at five PM. Both of those are by Zoom. Remember, if you want to make public comment, register in advance before three PM on the day of the meeting. There will be some signing of official documents. And if there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everybody. Namaste.